I would like to call the July 13th, 2023, Planning, Frankfurt Franklin County Planning Commission.
Stand.
Meeting to order.
Stand.
And ask the clerk to please call her own.
David Boggs.
Here.
Patty Cross, here. Sharon Jackson.
Here.
Keith Lee.
Here.
Timothy Lesher. Daryl Sanderson.
Here.
Cheryl Stewart.
Here.
Ray Swager. William May.
Here.
Form of seven.
Oop. Next item would be approval of the minutes, and we can approve the bills all in one motion if you'd like. And...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I make the motion approved for minutes from June 8th, 2023, and the approval of the payment of the bills.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Sanderson. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does both like say? All right, ayes have it. Next item would be staff items. Do we have a comprehensive plan status update? We do. Mr. Banjuta.
I really actually just kind of left it on the agenda as a placeholder.
I'm not really sure if we had a whole lot.
We did have an advisory committee meeting yesterday, kind of going through some of the future land use mapping. We do continue to make progress, and that's about all I have.
Great. Do any commission members have any questions for Mr. Ju?
I do.
Commissioner Cross.
I am on the steering committee, I think. And some of us have been wondering when we might ever meet again.
That is a good question. I'll be sure to ask Mr. Cockley and Mr. Hewitt that exactly and see if we can get you to answer that.
That'd be good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job.
Any other questions?
Does both like say? Ayes have it.
Now I have an inquiry, Mr. Chairman. Are we to assume that the minutes contain the summary of the public hearing?
No, we get that in our pocket.
I believe so. Is that, you want to say yes? Yes. That's what I've read.
Mr. Chairman.
This is Commissioner.
I was not at the last month's meeting, but I did watch the video and I read the summary.
Great. Thank you for the read.
I'm prepared to vote.
Thank you. Secretary, please go there. All right. Any findings of fact?
Mr. Chairman.
To be made, Commissioner Lee.
I would make finding fact number one, that the comprehensive plan, future land use plan, designates the property for some suburban residential.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Jackson. Any discussion? See none. On this, I'll ask the secretary to call her own.
Okay. Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yeah.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Swager. Oh, sorry. Chairman May.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lee.
I'd like to make the next finding fact number two, that the rural low-density residential zone district is appropriate, zone district for the suburban residential land use designation.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Sanderson. Is there any discussion? See none. I'll ask the secretary to call her own, please.
Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yeah.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Chairman May.
Yes.
The finding effect is approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lee.
Make note of finding fact, please. Number three, that the limited commercial LCL zone that's in the front of this property allows for a buffer transition between the residential uses and industrial uses to decide.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Sanderson. Any discussion? See none. Secretary, please call her own.
Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yeah.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. May.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I was interrupted. Any further findings? If not, we'll move on.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion that my finding fact sees.
Motion by Commissioner Lee. Second. Second by Commissioner Sanderson. Secretary, please call her own.
Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yeah.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Chairman May.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Anything else on that item?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Lee.
Based on findings of fact one, two, and three, I make motion to approve the Zone Map Amendment from Rural Residential District RR to Rural Low Density Multi-Family District RL with 27.4 acres of property located at, if I can read, 1550 Leestown Road.
Second.
And the limited commercial for both the 1.73 partial property tract two and the 1.48 acre portion of the property tract three. I'd like to make the thing with one condition, that this, the final development plan will have come through this body for approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Sanderson. Any discussion on this?
Uh, Mr. Commissioner. I know there was a concern about flooding in Slickway Branch. Will that be addressed in the final development plan? That's why I put that condition in there.
We talked at the last meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not, the secretary called her own, please.
Mr. Boggs.
Yes.
Ms. Cross.
Yes.
Mr. Jackson.
Yeah.
Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Chairman May.
Yes. Next item is public hearing. Stoltz Properties, they're requesting a zone map amendment from general industrial to general commercial for property located at the intersection of Hoover Boulevard and Duncan Road. Ask staff to present this item, please.
I meant to quote.
Oh, do we need to swear?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, Banjuta. Where are you from? Franklin County's court. Planning supervisor. I've been employed with the county for four and three-quarters years.
What's your education background?
I have a degree in political science from the University of Kentucky and a master's degree in urban planning from the University of...
Based on your experience and expertise, if you could appear to report with respect to the application of Stoltz Properties out loud in the city or the sound of the amendment from general industrial to general commercial district for 4.995 acres tract land at the intersection of Hoover Boulevard and Duncan Road. Would you like to submit that to the commission?
Yes.
Are there any additions or deletions to the report that you have submitted?
I meant to include a concept plan, which I have. I did email it out, but if you didn't see that email, I have it here if you'd like.
Does anyone need that concept plan?
I saw the email.
Would you like to summarize your point?
Sure. So, as mentioned, it's a nearly five-acre tract land, 4.995 acres. Proposed use is 89-room hotel. Surrounding land use to the north is a PO and CG zone, depending on which lot you're looking at. To the south is industrial IG zoning. To the east is industrial zoning, where Montoplast of North America is located. To the west is some professional office zoning. There are a couple residences in that PO zone. This is located at the corner of Hoover Boulevard and Duncan Road, kind of right at the intersection of Democat Drive as well. Throughout my report, I have positive findings. There is a, currently, a limitation in the sewer capacity, but the Sewer Department is actively working on upgrading that to resolve that issue. And so, with that, I do have all positive findings. The traffic analysis has been looked at as well. It's determined to be below the threshold that warranted any further analysis or any improvements to the road network. And I have four findings of fact that I will read. The first one is the comprehensive plan, future land use plan, designates the property for employment center. The subject property is within the 3,500-foot radius of regional retail. Three, the general commercial CG zone district is an appropriate zone district for the regional retail land use designation. And four, the proposed zone map amendment is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. And based upon those findings, I'm recommending approval. I'd like to enter my report into the record, and I'd be happy to answer some questions.
Okay. Now, Jackson won't accept the report in the record. Any...
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jackson.
I'd like, if, for staff, to kind of go through its positive findings so that we'll know the basis upon which you made those positive findings and how they apply to this request.
Okay, so we can start at goal one? All right. Let's see, goal one starts on page eight of the report.
And before you do that.
Yes, sir.
That radius of 3,500 versus, I guess, the dotted square that shows 2,500.
And the distinction between the rural landscape and urban suburban environment. At this particular location, there is development on every side, to the north, to the south, to the east, and to the west, so I didn't feel it contributed to sprawl. And number three, I said, policy number two, supported that finding, direct development into areas within or close proximity to existing infrastructure. As noted, all the infrastructure is there. There's just the capacity issue on the sewer. Goal four, I said two, three, and eight specifically. Let's see, it's two says, direct additional industrial and/or commercial growth onto land that is suited for industrial and/or commercial developments. I think that with it presently being zone industrial, you can say that it would be appropriate for commercial as well. Five, that one deals specifically with the flood zone. There is Slickway Branch, runs through the eastern portion of the land. No, the concept plan provided didn't show any structures proposed there. And this body has authorized our office to administer a 25% reduction in outflow to projects that impact the Slickway Branch watershed. So we will hold them to that standard as well for this project. Goal six, I said, policy number six is applicable. Encourage new development to fit the character of the existing neighborhood. I think that is, that goal really kind of is specific to residential areas, but I still try to address it here as well. There is a mixture of land uses here. There are residences, there's Montoplast, there's some commercial retail up on the corner of Duncan and for sales. So it does have a mix, and I didn't feel that a hotel would be too out of character for such a mix. And in fact, I did note that there is another hotel currently under construction within 3,000 feet. Sequel seven, I said, one supports it. Identify all quadrants of I-64 interchange as regional retail. I think we have touched on that. It is within that radius. So it does support that goal. So that kind of junk goes through all those goals and how staff came to the conclusions.
So now, did you, did you say that this property would qualify as an employment center?
That is its underlying designation, but it's also within that radius. So it's kind of both, in that sense.
So if the employment center definition basically points out primarily that these properties are expected to encompass offices, warehousing, and light manufacturing in a sort of campus-style development, how do you fit the hotel and its goals and objectives into that environment?
Well, it's within that radius to the interstate, so...
So the employment centerpiece does not apply, but rather, the radius is what you're saying applies?
I think that they could both be applicable, but in this particular instance, since we're talking about going to commercial, there's the justification there to say that it's appropriate because it's within that radius. If that radius wasn't there, it would be employment center only, and it would be more questionable as to whether it'd be appropriate. But because the interstate's there, the interchange, that's why there's that radius, is due to the proximity to the interchange that I did find is appropriate.
Okay. Remove the radius, or the radi, whichever you want to define that, and talk about how the hotel fit the employment center definition. Remove, remove the 3,500. Let's just say it doesn't apply at the moment.
Well, I think...
So how would it, how would it fit?
I don't know if I want to remove it. It's there, and I think that that was primarily a big portion of the justification. So we remove that, perhaps less reasonable. But I don't, still even with that, with removing that radius, there is a mixture of land uses that include commercial. There's the proposed car lot just to the northeast of the site. So there are other uses in the area that are not purely employment-centered classifications, the car dealership being one of them. There's the two convenience stores up there on the corner as well that wouldn't also really fall into that category, but are also within that radius. I keep going back to the radius, and it's there.
Because the radius becomes the primary there, rather than... Okay. Then the other question is, we, we have heard in this arena many, many, many times that we are running out of industrially, or industrial-zoned property. Yet, in this request, we're recommending that industrial-zone property, which is supposedly so unique and in short supply, be rezoned to a commercial-grade property. Explain that, because we're, 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 we're... We've heard so often that we're short of the supply of industrial, the zone property. This isn't an industrial park. Kind of explain.
Sure.
Give us some more information on that, please.
One, I would say, is that I think a lot of industrial users today are looking for large tracts, very large tracts, like the 690 Duncan tract, for example, which was approaching 100 acres. This site's only five. So you can't put a giant warehouse or something of that effect on this smaller-sized lot. So I think there's that. The other thing is that it's presently zoned industrial, and it has been zoned industrial for many years, and the free market has never picked up to, to develop it into industrial. So, but this free market's speaking here, saying, we want to make, we do have a user here, and it's commercial. I think that that should be taken into consideration.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that's it for the moment. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Jackson.
Any, Commissioner Lee?
Yes. Just for the public record, talk about sewer capacity. Am I correct that no building permits will be issued until the Sewer Department signs off on it? So if there's, if it's questionable now, it will be definitive before anything gets built.
That's absolutely true. We will not have an approved development plan without the Sewer Department's signature on it, and without the development plan, no building permits.
I just wanted that on the record. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions? You have a follow-up?
I do have follow-up, if any.
I don't think any of us has any, right?
Now, given the location of the property, and we mentioned the drainage of that property into Slickaway, either Itza Creek, or Branch, or some other waterway that can't be really defined appropriately, does...
But will be on approved development plan would require that the water leaving the site is slowed 25% beyond what we normally require. And we believe that that should mitigate some downstream impact.
Okay, just for the sake of argument, what you just described to me is that if we have hard rain and the drainage bays and fill up, it'll just be full longer than it would normally be full under a regular rain. It, it does not stop any of the flow from going into Slickaway. It just slows the flow.
Correct.
How, how, talk about how that addresses and mitigates the issues that have been raised downstream when you follow Slickaway, even as far as the country club. You know, it just kind of wiggles around the area.
Let me preface by saying, I'm not the county engineer, so it's not...
I understand.
It's not my expertise, but from my understanding of it, when you reduce the outflow by 25%, that water's not getting into Slickway as quickly as it would otherwise. So by slowing the rate of flow down, you're contributing less water into Slickway upon a heavy rain event. So that, because of that, it's not rushing downstream at such a high rate. Yeah, I don't have...
But if it's, if it's, if it's not flowing off that site as quickly, well, faster than it had been in the past, but from other sites, it's creating a flood-like situation downstream. Are we not simply slowing down the amount of water going into it so that the high water downstream that's being created elsewhere is high longer as opposed to flowing on? I'm asking a question. I'm not accusing...
Again, I'm not the county engineer, so I don't think I'm the best suited to answer this question. But I'll attempt.
But how did you, how did you, how did you factor that into your...
County engineer has...
In your, in your, in your analysis?
So when, when you slow the rate down, you're giving that high watermark that you're talking about earlier an opportunity to go down before this is totally released. So I think that that's kind of where it's mitigated, by saying that instead of just letting it go on through and contributing to that high watermark, perhaps making it go higher, it instead becomes slower and not contributing to that high watermark.
Okay. And since we're not considering this an employment center request, that employment center becomes a lower priority there, discuss, I guess, the, the, the application of the guideline related to being located to a major thoroughfare as being one of the conditions for a project such as the one that we're looking at. Which ones are you considering the major thoroughfare?
Probably 60 and 64, if I understand the question. Those are the major thoroughfares in the vicinity.
And in the information presented in, in, in the traffic impact study, are we saying that the number of cars that would present themselves as, as, as users of the project, the hotel, would not modify or in any way interfere with the, the level of traffic access and ingress at US 60? And, and I guess as Duncan wrote, that intersect, that it, they would be coming in on?
So we do have the planning commissioner's traffic engineer here. I might defer to him to let him handle some traffic questions. Okay? Do you have that now? Sure.
Okay. And you'll need to be sworn.
We are the road.
Yeah.
Good questions.
Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm going to just take your name, sir.
Brad Johnson with H&amp;V.
Thank you.
So, just to kind of give a little background on the, the traffic study, a couple emails were included in your, in your packet. So we looked at the trip generation, as we always do with these, any development, and also conferred with the transportation cabinet. For an individual hotel of this size, it is a relatively small trip generator. We're usually, we use a threshold of 100 trips to kind of indicate whether we want to do, encourage a traffic study to be done. This is about half of that. So we also kind of looked at the potential for the site. There wasn't anything immediate that, that was planned. It was our understanding that there's probably room for potentially a, a second hotel on this site, but there are no plans for that at this point in time. And a lot could change in, you know, in a five-year period, for example. So it was, it was agreed between us and the state through some correspondence that a full-fledged traffic study would be, would be required if the site were further developed. But as a courtesy, we did ask the applicant to do a little bit of traffic work instead, or upfront. And they did provide that, that information. And, you know, just having been involved in several applications along Duncan Road, I mean, it was really kind of showing some of the same things we've been seeing in, in previous. And that is probably the, the biggest concern in this area is that queuing on Duncan Road. And while we, you know, we're talking about 50 trips, I mean, that is a, you know, a, a small increase, and we're going to continue to, with each new development, you know, provide an increase there. And really, the, I think the challenge that I keep hearing from, from others there is really, I mean, if you look at level service, which is, you know, us as traffic engineers always do, the level of service for the intersection has never, you know, been worse than a C, which is, you know, typically considered, you know, favorable. However, you know, that, that queue can get long enough that it kind of impacts the operations there at the ZAC. And that has been, you know, raised this concern by, by you and others in, in the community. So those are the kind of things we are watching for and trying to be cognizant of. And one of the reasons we did ask the applicant to just do some preliminary analysis there. So when you look at the difference between kind of a, a no-build condition and a build condition, you're not going to see much change just because of, you know, such a small number of trips. But, I mean, you do, you do, we do know that, that exists and that, you know, we kind of monitor that queue. There's, so that's something that we're cognizant of and tried to kind of... I mean, fortunately, with some of the industrial users in the area, you do get a little bit different shift changes. So there is, you know, some, one may be picking, one the other isn't. So you do have some advantages there. But, yeah, that, that's kind of one of the things that we've kind of watched for. We haven't gone into more detail with you on that, but it's kind of a high level, that's what we, what we have.
Follow-up. And, and I do understand what you're asking their, their workers to come to the office three or four days out of the week, not necessarily all five. And once that gets back to its, its anticipated level, whatever that may be, do you think that the level... its anticipated level, whatever that may be, do you think that the level of operation of that intersection would then change to be at, at, at a more reduced level as opposed to operating at your average C level that you say it's currently operating?
Yeah, so, we have, you know, just kind of speaking to some of the traffic volumes in the area, I mean, I'll start there. I mean, we did, we have started to do new traffic counts, and, and we are seeing here, I mean, I personally do studies across the state, and I've seen a reduction, and you'll see it on US 60 in particular, a reduction in traffic. So, I think even though we have come back to work and so forth, just those partial day or, you know, three in, two out, which a lot of companies and state government do, you have solid, solid reduction, and I think that will, will stay, but I think it's more the development that will continue to increase. So, I mean, the one thing that we have tried to factor in is all of the developments that have been approved through this body, so those, you know, do get counted for that aren't built yet, so it's not just this development that they've looked at, they have added in the dealership and, and other, other approved developments in the area. So, and, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's inevitably, you know, I think you will see growth in this area, there's still undeveloped tracks. I think there will, you know, long-term, I think there will certainly be, you know, motivation to make additional improvements along Duncan. I think there's interest in, I mean, I've just, I, I know there's, you know, potential interest down the road to even, you know, try to maybe signalize Old Frankfurt Pike and Hoover, for example, that, you know, to look at that, you know? So, that could be another option to get, help get folks that maybe are, have established particularly along Hoover, give them another access option, and give them a way to, to make the left a little easier on US 60 as that traffic may build over time. I mean, we certainly, like I say, we anticipate that, that happening, so, I think, yeah, I mean, I think over, certainly we'd want to look at, or that there could be improvements made down, you know, down the line for this, you know, still this transportation area as maybe a little development comes before this body, you know? So, that's where it's going to come from, I mean, particularly along Duncan.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else?
One quick question.
Sure.
Hard to read a traffic study, it's a little tough, but if I read it correctly, due to the nature of a hotel, the way the traffic is kind of spread all the day, the peak times at the intersection of Duncan, Hoover, and, and 60 is pre-nervous with this prop, with this proposal in front of you? Is that safe to say?
Yes, I mean, it is very, you know, it is going to be spread out, it's, it's not really, I mean, particularly in the afternoon, I mean, I think some of the shift changes with the development with the larger industrial users there is going to be a little bit different than folks coming and going from their hotel, so, yeah.
That's one of the...
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
May I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Of the staff?
Staff? Absolutely, please.
I'll be gone soon, I promise you. In terms of the environment, again, relating back to other requests for zone changes that we've had come before this commission in recent time, I'm not talking years ago, I'm talking about recent time, there has been concerns about whether or not zone changes and development in that area will somehow impact or negatively impact the ecological environment, as well as whether or not any of the farm-related environment would somehow be impacted negatively, and thus therefore not support continued development on properties in that particular area and, and adjacent. You are, not, do you want to, but do you mind commenting on the environmental impact of what's being proposed?
Sure. I don't think that the environmental impact to this particular development would be any greater than any other thing that this body has approved recently. Coming, the few that come to mind that actually would probably have a greater and more significant impact would be the 690 Duncan rezoning that was, that went through this body, and the, the car dealership that also went through this body as well. I think those two developments had a more, do pose a more significant impact to ecology, and this particular one, just by the scope of those two, and the, how the proposed developments may impact Slickaway in particular. The car dealership, Slickaway runs straight through that development, and they will have to contend with that on a development plan. 690 Duncan splits multiple watersheds and could pose an impact there, but this particular one, you know, although in the vicinity of those, I, I don't feel that it would be any greater than that, and perhaps would be less.
And no impact on the residents that's just right across the way from, from, from the property itself?
Well, think of it this way, if it remained industrial, an industrial user were there that had some noxious uses, pollution, et cetera, that would be potentially worse for adjacent property owners in terms of pollution and negative environmental impacts compared to a hotel.
I agree. I think that's a good statement, but still you kind of veered away from the question that I asked. And the question that I asked is whether or not this particular development would have a negative impact on the property. This, this, this proposed use. I appreciate the, the, the response that you gave me, but I'd appreciate much greater the response that you're going to give me as relates to the development of this property with this project, and how it impacts that residence. The one whose picture that you, you, you so proudly provided, that's in the package.
I can't say that it won't be any impact, but I don't anticipate a significant impact to adjacent property owners. They received notice, and I haven't heard, I don't know if they're here tonight, but I haven't heard directly from any adjacent property owners expressing any environmental concerns.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other? I think, this man, this is, this is, he really didn't say anything to me about it, so this might be partially made up. The name Rainmaker Hospitality, there's a little concern about the extra water. See, I know. It was bad. I did mean to put that, I'm sorry, that's why I said it may be made up. Yes, and if anyone, okay. Any other staff, I mean, questions from commission members or staff?
I'm representing Rainmaker Hospitality. We are in agreement with the staff in addition to, just want to add a couple of points related to the land use. We feel like, even though we think that the hotel would be a complement for the industrial use, because for business, through, into the site, into the, the business complex that would be serving the businesses in that area, so that would be more like a complement to the industrial park, and from a business point of view for executive or any business trip coming to the complex itself. And the other thing, in addition to what Ben has mentioned, that site is like five acres, and then you have almost 35 feet of drop, to 40 feet of drop in elevation, that's even more harder for industrial facility to create it. You need larger warehouses at certain flat terrain, so, and maybe that's one of the reasons why this property has been vacant for so many years. So, we believe our proposal not only complements it from the use, but also can we get the best of that property to serve that industrial park. On that's on the land use, on the environmental, as you know, like on the environmental, you have, assuming that property is flat, for the sake of conversation, and then you have the industrial use coming. You're going to deal with heavy metals, you're going to deal with EKOLIA, you're going to deal with a lot of pollutant that that property will not generate. It has, it has its own environmental pollutants that will generate, but will be controlled through multiple of processes during the final development plan with an extended detention like Ben mentioned, but definitely the amount and the load of pollutants that would be generated from this site would be much less if it was industrial facility. And on stormwater, we are in agreement with the staff that asking us to increase our basin capacity to discharge at a rate 25% less. And to answer the question, to the best I can put it, is that if you look at Slickaway River or Creek, it has certain capacity, it has certain conveyance that can carry it. So, either it, is it that conveyance can be carried in one hour, or you can extend it to two hours, three hours, but you are using the maximum of that conveyance so you don't try to flood people downstream. So, that's the purpose of detention, is that you try to delay, you run off discharge X amount of time depending on every, every detention basin, so that you take the maximum use of the conveyance of the creek, so you don't flood anybody around you. So, basically, that's, I cannot share what that means, so, the staff asks us to reduce it by 25%, and we'd be more than happy to reduce by 25%.
Commission members have questions for the...
Yes, I have a comment, please.
Commissioner Box.
Yes, nice to see you again. I'm very familiar with Rain, Rainmaker, and also the number of people that you have employed there, and so, I, I know that there's been some question about this becoming an employment center and versus the number of people that work in a warehouse. Would you please give this body some estimate as to how many people would be employed there?
I'm not sure on the exact number, but on similar facilities, I usually arrange between 20 to 30 people working in, in, in the matter, so...
Yes.
But I don't know how many people would be definite, but that's the range in similar facilities.
That's what I thought, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commission members have any questions for the applicant? It's representative. All right. Any audience members have any questions for the applicant? It's representative. Not, all right, we'll move on, back to...
Motion to... No. Too much to say.
We can ask, do we need a motion to table? Are we going to table this, or do something?
Is there any audience to speak against?
Okay, I thought I would ask the audience to, that's right. But we'll formally say, does anyone speak here wish to speak in favor or in opposition to the Zone Map Amendment? Okay, see none, we'll move on.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like my motion to take this item off, close public hearing, and let the staff, and let the staff prepare a summary, because there has been a lot of testimony, a summary, so we can vote on it next meeting. That's my motion.
Okay. Motion to close the public hearing, and staff prepare a summary and vote on it next meeting. Motion by Commissioner Lee, second by Commissioner Sanders, meaning discussion. See none, all right, we'll do it by, Secretary, please call it.
Okay. Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Ms. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Seward?
Yes.
Chairman May?
Yes.
Motion unanimous.
Next item would be any new business? See none, other business? See none, next item visit would be adjournment.
Adjournment.
Second by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Frost. Hold those in favor, signify the...
Aye.
Aye, hold the post, stand your chair, and we'll see you next meeting.